Good morning. We'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, August 8th, 88, 2023, here in Coachella. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. For those of you who don't play soccer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel so counterculture doing that.
I got that.
Are we, are we counterculture here? Doing that? Let's see, roll call, please. Good morning, Marcel.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Nistada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Nice to have everyone here. Are we, do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any either. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time?
But we'd rather not.
No comment.
And President Powell, let me just ask if there's anybody on Zoom who would like to comment, please use the raise hand feature and I will unmute you. And I do not see anybody using that feature, so you're good there.
Okay, well, just let me know if something changes. Consent calendar. I don't think I had anything weird on here. Just editorials. So consent calendar items 5A through I, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass 5-0. Action calendar, 7A. Ion exchange treatment plant. What is her name?
Hi Sabrina, good morning.
Sabrina, good morning, yeah, welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
So our request today is to order construction contract to Pacific Hydrotech in an amount of $9,478,500 for the replacement ion exchange treatment plant number 7991. Our request also includes the authorization for the general manager to execute an additional $2 million amendment with County Riverside for ARPA funding. So right now, this project is funded with $6,059,000 from ARPA funding, or with ARPA funding, rather, and the remaining would be paid for, sorry, in addition to the $6 million, the county has agreed to give us additional $2 million. That agreement is forthcoming, so we don't have that just yet. The remaining funds would be paid from our water system facility backup charges, of which we have $21 million.
And so the ARPA is a grant? It's not, it's not something that we're required to repay?
Correct.
Yeah.
Very, very.
Oh, yeah, jump on that, right? I did have a question in the, in the write-up. It says that there's some additional capacity compared to the current level of capacity of the old system. But then it says, yeah, this will allow an additional 600 homes. 600 homes isn't very many. I mean, aren't we looking at thousands of homes in that area? And what are we going to do when we reach that new capacity?
Yeah, correct. So the previous design was 1,100 gallons per minute, the new design's 1,500, so it's a 30% increase, which will serve the 600 homes. We are still serving the existing community, though, so that's a portion of, we have a portion of that community plus Mecca. So there's far more than the 600 that it will actually serve. I don't know the total number offhand.
Well, you know, I understand that, but.
We also have Avenue 66.
That's correct, yeah.
But where's the, how are we going to serve this 700th home that gets built? You know what I mean? I mean, once they build those 600 homes, that, my point is, that's not really very many homes, especially for Mecca, which could easily add 5,000 homes.
So just put it in a little bit of context. When we build the Avenue 66 pipeline, that will be able to serve, you know.
Much more.
Much more, going into the future. But the purpose of getting the well online prior to the Avenue 66 pipeline was to help facilitate this 600 home, this chunk of 600 homes, so that Coachella Valley Housing Coalition could get started on one of their projects.
Are we going to blend for that community as well, so that they can get their water from, from the pipeline as well as from the ion exchange?
Yes, yes. We currently have two wells located on 60th and Pierce that are also treated through another ion exchange treatment plant. And those, those serve from like north, south, north to south. And then 7991 can serve north, and it can also serve down to North Shore Bombay Beach area. And then Avenue 66 pipeline, there'll be a pressure-reducing station because it's coming from a higher pressure zone to Mecca.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and it's probably some benefit to having some local production as well.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Yeah, the intent was to get this on much sooner, but when we first went out to bid, the prices were much higher, and then we had to do a dance with the county to see if we could get some more money from them to continue on. It took a while, but they didn't, I guess we're still waiting for the actual document, but they have assured us that it's possible, and so, but I think the intent was to have this started almost a year ago.
Right.
Right, okay.
Remember when we put the original one in, it was quite a bit less than this, so.
Yeah. The temporary, well, that was the temporary one.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're all aware that the county has a huge interest in trying to develop affordable housing out there. They, I think they have some projects that they've identified with the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, and I think that's really what's kind of pushing them to try to facilitate these, the development of these projects. And so when we heard that the bid came out higher, we did reach out, I think Snap, you've reached out plenty of times, I did have a conversation with their office. So I'm pretty happy that they were open to putting in an additional $2 million. I think this will be great for the community.
I agree. Could we have a motion to approve 7A?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Good. Other people's money. With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed 5-0 also.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, I appreciate that.
Elmer, good morning.
Elmer, 7B, go ahead.
Is there PowerPoint slides? I know, I don't think I, there's PowerPoint. Okay. All right, good morning, President Powell, Board of Directors. The item I have before you relates to the proposed Salton Sea landfill annexation. This was previously brought to the Board on June 12th, and the Board requested further information to bring this back in before making a decision. A quick agenda is a brief again on the project information. You asked for analysis of the water effects on this project, the effect of the annexation, possible precedents, and then the current status with LAFCO. So first off, the existing landfill has an existing 600-foot deep well. It produces about 60 gallons per minute. The well water is extremely brackish. The current capacity meets the daily operations, which is primarily dust control, but during liner construction, which occurs every three years or so, the demand goes up to 450,000 gallons per day and a total of 40 million gallons for liner construction. This exceeds their current capacity of their existing well. BRTIC has reported to us that they are planning more permanent facilities in the future, an estimated demand of 180 gallons per employee for 50 employees when, if the facility gets fully built. This project was petitioned to LAFCO in 2020 for annexation into CVWD.
Elmer, could.
Yes, sir.
We're using different numbers for each bullet point.
Okay.
Can we just put in, into acre-feet, maybe? It's a number that we all understand.
Okay.
I don't know if you can do that, is that, is that?
Well, 5 million gallons a day is 15 acres.
Per day.
I believe that's in there.
15.
So the average annual demand, 103 acre-feet, and then, so the 40 million gallons I have in the report says 143 acre-feet to construct the landfill, so.
Per, that would, each time you do a liner, it's 100 and.
43 acre-feet.
And then that other number with the 9,000 gallons per day, do we know what that is on an annual acre-foot number?
I, I do not know.
I guess you could multiply it out, it would be 10? Is that 10, like, less, is it 8?
42.
I'm doing it in my head.
I have an iPhone.
It's a little less than 10, huh?
About 10.
About 10. You see what I'm saying now?
Right.
But like.
I understand, yeah, I understand, yeah. Next time.
One has the 103 acre-feet, which is great, and then we have gallons per day, and.
Right, I should have presented all those in acre-feet.
I just wanted to know, yeah.
That last one for the employees, the 15 employees, is 10 acre-feet.
10, yeah, per year, yeah.
Which hasn't been permanent, has not been brought in as a permanent, hasn't actually been proposed at this time.
Yeah.
They had stated that they are planning it, but there are no formal planning or engineering documents on that, on that.
And, and we're talking about doing a liner every three years, or is there multiple liners that each need to be done every three years?
They report that it's every three years that they typically, their cells for solid waste fill up, and they have to put in a new liner about every three, about three years.
Okay. And would they continue to use the brackish well for their dust control?
That is what they're currently opposing, yes.
To continue using the brackish well for the dust control?
Yes.
So we're looking at about, on average, 50 acre-feet a year, roughly. 143 divided by 3, and then add 10, so you're around, you're around 60, maybe, 50 or 60 a year.
If they do proceed with the permanent facilities.
For the new water, yeah.
We have not received any of that.
If they even do it. So 50 to 60. Just trying to get a sense of the number, you know.
I have a question. Did the Imperial Board approve this?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did approve this in June.
It was on their calendar.
They approved it the same day that, on June 12th, so. Did they submit something? They were going to submit a letter of support, or have they received anything?
No? Okay.
So to give you some perspective of where the landfill is, so the landfill is located in the West Salton Sea sub-basin, and currently, CVWD doesn't operate any domestic wells in the West Salton Sea sub-basin. The source water for both the east and west shores of the Salton Sea are from the Middleton production zones and the Indio sub-basin. So this map helps show you that the Indio sub-basin feeds the Western Salton Sea sub-basin with the various wells further, further northwest. So currently, all of our Indio sub-basin provides water to both the east and the west shores of the Salton Sea. We don't operate any wells in the Western Salton Sea sub-basin because of the brackish So the water analysis provided to you here in the report, so CVWD has planned for growth within its current service area within the unincorporated Imperial Valley County. So in our, in our reports, the growth by 2025 was projected to increase by 540 approximately residential units, and by 2045, adding about 1,750 residential units was projected. So currently, as of July 30th, 2023, CVWD has only installed 36 domestic meters in the unincorporated Imperial County area. So the landfill project equates to about 142 residential units. So there is capacity in the system because we had projected for this type of growth, and we're not seeing that current growth in the counties of Imperial.
But, but this project won't preclude that other growth from happening? It's kind of a separate.
It's separate from the planning, but it's saying we're not even targeting, what it's saying is we're not hitting our planning numbers.
Yeah, I understand.
Because never planned for. The other question brought to, brought board was what the effects of the annexation are. It's important to note that the effect of annexation is that all persons owning the land within, within the annexation territory have the same rights and duties within anyone in our current territory. They are liable for payment, interest, or any other amounts due to us from bonds or obligations, although this property is owned by the county and has a zero, has a value of zero for property, for property tax reasons. And then the annexed territory will be subject to taxes and assessments or fees or charges established by CVWD, which means they would be paying the domestic water fees if they chose to be paying the domestic water fees, if we do allow that.
So the property's owned by the Imperial County?
Correct.
Does the property fall within any of the directorial representation boundaries? Be added to yours?
It does not, no. It would have to be added with, as part of the annexation process.
Would you have to annex everything around it, or they'll let you annex an island?
Because the, it's not an island because it's continuous with our border, so because it is on our border, we can't annex it without annexing east or west. And I believe east or west, the other properties are all federally owned.
Oh, I see that. I was looking at the, at the red, but the red is what you're calling the Milton production zone.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you're probably not going to have any residents in there anyways.
No, except the county. They could put a, they could put a trailer out there.
Security guard?
Yeah.
Why should CBWD do this? I mean, why should we do this?
That's a good question.
I mean, what's, what's the?
That's for the Board, that's why we had, had.
Because they asked.
A decision, because they've asked. They've asked the Board to join.
Yeah, but we're asking staff, like, what's, what's the advantage to us doing this? I mean, what, what are we getting out of this? What are our ratepayers getting out of this?
Nothing.
I think that for.
Goodwill.
Here, here's the framing. Yeah, the, how I would frame it is, are we in a position to essentially export 50 acre-feet a year outside of our service area? And technically, you wouldn't be doing that because you'd annex it in, so now it would become part of our service area. But are we, are we in a position to say, yeah, we have the water, we'll export 50 acre-feet a year? I mean, I'm not in favor.
Are the folks, are the folks running into?
I know this guy's going to want to.
Are the folks running into issues? Because I think I've heard about this issue for at least a year and a half.
So the current well, right, the current well does not meet their demands during construction of the liners. So they've, they have been using a construction meter on our side of the, of our service area to, to fill some tanks and supplement their construction.
But that's BRTIC's problem, right? That they're having to bring the water in farther.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they're asking for this.
Right.
Okay.
So they, they can't do another well on, on the site, or treat the water, is there some other alternative? I guess we have somebody here, so he can speak to that.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't we do the, do you want to finish, Elmer?
Let me finish, I've got some, some other questions.
Okay.
Hopefully, at least answer some of the questions.
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
So you talked about precedents, so LAFCO laws don't really address any precedent-setting scenarios as they relate to annexations. The determinations are made case by case by the Board of Directors of each individual agencies. Just for record, there's been a total annexation to CVWD boundaries of 43 since 1918. The last annexation was 1998. It was in the northern boundaries with Desert Water Agency and Mission Springs, that north, northwest area. That was more of a consolidation or clarification annexation. There wasn't a specific developer asking to join CVWD, that was more of a readjust the boundaries type annexation. In the 1960s, approximately 30 annexations from the county of Imperial were added to CVWD's boundaries. And what you asked for the impact is, you know, those, those properties in the county of Imperial that we annexed are dependent on the Indio sub-basin to provide domestic water.
Okay.
And then I'll, if you had any questions for a representative for BRTIC, but that completes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Elmer. I mean, do you, any questions for Elmer before we go to public comment? Or, as you say, any more questions?
Right.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, I don't know if you were here, Anthony, on the last time, they, they actually, he spoke last time also.
Good morning.
I remember you were in with us, yeah. All right, good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dave Briskie, I'm with BRTIC, and I'm the Director of Engineering, and I wear a few hats out there, the Regional General Manager for the Landfill Division. I'm offered out of Fontana, California, and I'm out in Salton City two days a week, usually Wednesday and Friday. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning, and I, I want to thank your staff for, for putting this report together. It really is, has a lot of detail and it's put together well. So we've been out there for 15 years almost now, and as you know, we have a, we've, we have a well out there, and it's brackish, and it's, it has plenty of water to handle our, our daily operations. Our issue comes with, with construction where, where we, we run short. And it's a little misleading, 450,000 gallons a day is, for construction is kind of their peak. I mean, it varies as they go through the different phases of the construction, so 10 acre-feet is really on the high side for that, for that, for those phases.
10, excuse me, 10 was the number we were using for the employees, I think we were talking about.
Oh, I'm sure.
We were using, talking about 100 and.
No, it was 40 or something, it was 450,000 gallons a day.
Total 40 million gallons. We were using 40 million gallons.
Yeah, so I'm, my estimates before were more in the 22 to 25 million per, per phase, but at 450, like I said, 450 gallons a day is the peak. So you go through phases when you're, when you're building the cells, dust control while they're doing a mass excavation, and then, and then moisture conditioning the soil when you're putting it back to make a, to make your clay liners and whatnot. So the actual, the actual usage for those construction periods is probably closer to 25 million. So to give you a little bit of insight into what we've been, what, what we've been working on, and I certainly understand your, your questions as far as what's in it for you, we look at this as kind of an emergency connection. We have no desire ever to use domestic water for dust control. Eventually, we're going to have, we have 17 employees out there right now. These are salt-of-the-earth guys that are working out there in the heat and whatnot, and, and we, we need to have some, some, you know, better employee facilities out there, showers and, and restrooms with potable water. We, 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 we actually get our drinking water from the, from our airport property there, that's, that's right out there, which is, you know, it's what we signed up for, we understand that. Our ultimate plan is to take the water from the, from the wastewater treatment plant out there, have them upgrade their, their system to, to treat the water and then pump it seven, basically put in seven miles of forest main to, to push that water up to the landfill. What we're asking for is a, a stepping stone to eventually get there. That, that water treatment plant has, has problems. It's, it's overcapacity, they, they built it on a, you know, the, the geology out there is such that you have sandy and clay layers, and they're, they're interbedded, and, and five or 10 feet down below, they're infiltration basins, they've got a clay liner. So their infiltration basins take the water, flows down gradient a little bit, and then it pops up. And so the Regional Water Board reduced their capacity to stop that from happening. So their capacity issue is getting rid of the treated water. So we've been working with them for a number of years, trying to get them to a point where they can, they can do this. And we have all had the, the grants application process started, but again, we're a separate entity, and we're a private entity, and so it has to be a public-to-public type of a relationship in order for the state to, to provide the grants. I think four or five years ago, their staff had it all set up, but they didn't bring us into the process, and the way they had, had presented the, the, the application to the state was that BRTIC, the private industry, was going to be the receiver of the water. So with that, they would only support the, the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. We would have had, we, BRTIC would have had to put the six or seven million dollars into the water line and then pay for the water afterwards to support the additional work at the wastewater treatment plant. So that, that didn't, that just kind of fell flat, and I don't know if you're aware of some of the political things that are going on down there, but it, they've had a, an enormous amount of turnover, turnover in their staff, and, you know, bless their hearts, you know, you've got people that are sitting on the Board as you do, but they have, don't have a lot of experience with it, and, and so they're trying to work through those matters. Long story short, we're, we're asking for help to get to our ultimate plan, which is to use that, use that recycled water for, for our dust control. So really, in the end, I think you're only going to be, you're going, you're only going to be signing up for our domestic needs, which, again, at, at 50 employees, I think 9,000 gallons a day for those 50 employees are 100 gallons a day each, again, I think is a high side, but again, you know, we want to make sure you know what you're, you're dealing with, with that, with, with that, those numbers, so. I hope that helps put it in perspective, you know, we do, you say what's, what's in it for, for, for the water, but I don't think there's anything other than, as you say, goodwill, but that landfill now takes all the trash from the East Valley, Indio and Coachella. It, it previously went to, I believe, Lamb Canyon landfill, which is on the 79, yeah, the Highway 79 between Beaumont and, and Hemet down there, so it's a lot longer of a transportation issue. So I think in the end, what's in it is your ratepayers' trash side of keeping that viable and, and keeping the costs down as much as we can on that end, so. I, I beg you to consider that.
Yeah, just a question, this airport, you said you get the water from the airport?
Okay, so.
How far away is that?
That's on the landfill, right? I don't know if you have the, the map up there, but, so when we were, when we were permitting, so the airport is here, okay, so this is a section line, that's Poline Road, then right here is another section line, so we own about 300 acres in, in and around the airport. We, when we, it was privately owned, when we were starting our partnership with Imperial County on the landfill, landfills and airports don't get along. If you have, you, you have potential for bird strikes if there's, there's birds, you know, vectors at the landfill, and so, so depending on the size of the airport and what it can support as far as turboprop or jet aircraft, then it requires more distance. then it, it requires more distance. And so that the airport was, was privately owned and it was for sale. And so we picked it up so that we could kind of control that a little bit. So we, we do own that, so.
How far away is that?
Well, it's a mile from here to here, so it's, you know, a mile and a half that we have to drive to, to get, to get drinking water.
I know, it's just a question. Would you be able to put your employee facilities at the airport?
Not really. No, it's not. It's just, it's just not doable. So, I mean, we have, we have break rooms and office trailers out at the landfill as it is. And we have, we, we treat our, we have a small RO system at, onsite to treat our, our well water. And we use that for toilet flushing and hand washing. But, you know, again, it's, it's just not something that, that we're prepared to do. You know, I understand that. I understand your, your issue and I, I, I appreciate it. These are good jobs. These are, these are high-paying, solid, forever jobs, jobs that people can retire on. They are, it is prevailing wage jobs. And, you know, we just try to do the best thing we can for our, for our employees, so.
I have a question for staff. Would this still require an extension of a mile, mile and a half of pipeline?
So the current, current plan show just strengthening the pipeline down to the, down to their property at the airport. But there will be, if they go to the second phase, which is the actual offices and buildings, they would have to extend a pipeline, yes.
So right now, the plan is just to go to the airport?
To strengthen the airport, yes.
And who's gonna pay, who's paying for that?
It'd be a condition of them receiving water, so they would have to construct and design those facilities at their own cost.
Elmer?
Okay.
Do it or don't do it, those are the two. What about the cost to change loops?
Ask them to change.
Yeah, there's a cost, there's a cost for the application.
Garrison, can you change? Thank you.
Elmer, I have a question about the tax exempt, about the tax sharing agreement.
Yeah.
So because both entities are, are publicly owned agencies, there is no impact?
There is no tax change because the property itself is worth zero. So any of the property taxes being imposed, like state water fee, that it's imposed on a percentage times a zero value because it's property owned by the county of Imperial within its jurisdiction.
So there's no obligation created to, to pay another agency in lieu taxes or anything, any possessory taxes or accessory? I, I just wanted to make sure there's no obligation that we're inheriting as a result of doing these, doing this agreement?
Well.
Sounds like there isn't.
Well, if they do end up privatizing, we have statements in the tax agreement that if they do end up privatizing, whether it does become value on the property, that they would be subject to our, our property tax payments.
But we aren't, but we would not be obligated to pick up or pay for any other taxes that the counties currently pay.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Elmer, so, so you said we have a construction meter out there that, that seems to be providing whatever supply they need for, whenever they need it. What, what happens if we say no? Like what's, if you could just, what, what happens if we say no?
Well, so there is existing construction meter out there and the current system does not support a lot of the, the construction for the liners. So, I mean, if we say no, it's really up to BRTech to adapt their construction methods.
And sir, you didn't, you didn't answer the question about, I think one of our directors was wondering about the possibility to drill a new well.
Well, yeah, well, there again, we can drill a new well. I mean, there's no, there's, there's not an issue there. It's gonna be brackish. And that will help with, with our construction, obviously. We still don't have the water for the, for the employees. That, you know, and again, that's, that's, that's an issue that we're gonna have to figure out somehow. If, even if we were to get the recycled water from, from the wastewater treatment plant at, at, at the Community Services District, we'd still probably have to change our plans as far as, I don't think anybody wants to be taking showers in recycled wastewater. So, I mean, that would still be an issue for us. We'd have to change our plans somehow with that, put in additional treatment. But again, that's what our, our, our eventual goal is to get there to save water. I think with, with some of the issues down there at, in the town of Salton City is, is their lack of commercial development down there. They don't have any jobs. They don't have any water. So any help we can get from you would be.
Yeah, I, I have one last question. On your, on your planning for permanent facilities with 50 employees, you're calculating 180 gallons per day per employee. Did you at all consider the state's requirement of 55 gallons per day per person and possibly going down to 43 gallons per day?
Well, we, we certainly can. That's, that's, that's not an issue. I, I pulled the 180 out of, you know, documentation and reference documents. You know, that 180 is also gonna be for washing down equipment and, and cleaning stuff, hose bib type flow. So it's kind of added in there. Again, the nine, as I mentioned earlier, that 9,000 gallons a day is a, is a high estimate. And we, again, we wanted to make sure that you, you had a, you know, at least a conservative estimate to, to deal with, on your planning.
Okay. Aren't we going to be just taking away water from the, the residents for, for growth in Salton City? Aren't we gonna be just, it seems like.
I think the report, staff's report.
That's a staff question.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
I mean, right? I mean, we're gonna be taking water away from growth. I understand that they haven't had the growth that was projected, but.
Right, so the current plan has those type of growth numbers here and that's what we're seeing now. So what's gonna happen to meet those growth numbers, that's, we just can't predict those numbers, so.
It's potentially would, because if we serve this project, it doesn't mean that somebody doesn't have the ability to put in a home. You know, that blue bar could happen. We, whether we do this project or not, it really has no effect on that, I think.
So this is a question for probably you, Elmer. Is that if, if we went down to the 50 gallons per day per employee, at 50 employees, which is a total build-out, that's three, roughly three and a third units of water a day, 750 gallons. So can't our existing system, I mean, we're close to Sandra Avenue over there. Can't our existing system just put a pipeline over there and, and supply one domestic meter connection without all of this annexation?
So legally, we can't serve outside of our boundaries.
Okay.
Plus, the main ask is for the construction.
Yeah, but I'm gonna discount the construction. I think they can drill a well. I think they've got plenty of salty water to, you know, use in their construction activities that, and, and the recycled water from the wastewater treatment facility. I think there's plenty of supply there for construction activities. And, and really, for, for me, when I look at it, I just look at, there's a, you know, what, what can we do in terms of domestic water for the, I mean, right now, it's very few employees, but even at up to the 50, it's only three, you know, it's under five units of, of water a day. I mean, it's not that much. I mean, can't we just sell it to the county and?
Couldn't you just have a truck and bring it in like that?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to do that.
Yeah.
The number's small. Okay.
But what's not lost on me is that it's, you know, it's trash from Coachella and Indio and, you know, Riverside County. And, and so I feel like there's, you know, some kind of.
There's no trash from Imperial there, going there?
Very little, only Salton City. There's, there's several, the county owns several landfills, small landfills, one in Callexico. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not used to doing this. So, so very little trash comes from Imperial County. We have the, the residents from the Salton Sea area, the North Shore. And we're, we're just in the, we, we developed that landfill in, in partnership with, with the county. The county was broke. So we've, we've bought, basically got the, we won the, the.
County of Riverside, you mean?
No, County of Imperial.
Okay.
You know, back in 2005, 2006, they were broke and wondering how they were gonna get out of, get out of the misery. And so they, they decided to privatize that landfill. So we've, we've put, put a lot of money into it to, to bring that forward. But it was developed as a regional landfill to serve the communities of Southern California. And so Imperial County itself had, I think, nine or 10 small, unlined, old landfills around their county. They're slowly closing them down because they're just so rural and so expensive to operate. But they, so they still have two operating landfills, one in Callexico and one over in Nylton. And then they have the Republic landfill in Imperial. So that's where the majority of the population is situated around south of Browley. So, I mean, we do take material from Browley, but it, Browley, but it's, it's minimal.
What, what kind of franchise fees does Imperial County get off of this facility?
Considerable. I don't know where exactly they are right now. We started it, and it's a, it's a, it ratchets up. So until we hit 1,000 tons a day, it was a annual fee, or not an annual fee. It was a fixed, it's, and again, I, I want to say that we started at a little over $2 a ton in 2008 that has been ratcheted up by the CPI. When we hit 1,000 tons a day, then it goes to a different number. And we're just there at 1,000 tons a day. So we are providing considerable revenue. And, and that's not the only thing we're paying for. So we're, we're paying into their, their environmental health services department. You know, planning fees and permitting fees with, with the, with the building departments and planning departments. And so it's a considerable amount of.
So if we annex this property, would all that income then come to Coachella Valley Water District as, as?
No. Yeah.
Wondering.
That's a great question.
Just for water service.
I wish we could, I, I wish we could. The, the problem is being so, so, so remote from the major population centers that we're, we're, we're strapped with having, with limited, you know, because it costs so much to get trash out of, out of LA or wherever in the transportation. We have to keep our tipping fee lower to, to be competitive, and so.
So what, maybe I missed it. What was the percentage of, of Coachella, Imperial trash versus outside?
Well, we really have very little.
Okay.
Very little municipal solid waste. We take, we take weird stuff like filter cake and, and some, some fly ash like, like from, from the Mecca Power Plant, we take fly ash. And then so, so we have, we have some, some industrial type waste. We take some, we take filter cake from one of the geothermal plants down in Nylton. That's, you know, so it's, it's more than just, it's more than just residential trash, so, yeah.
Well, all right. We really appreciate the time, Dave. I, you know, this is unusual for us to interact this much with somebody. I think it's because it's just, we're trying to understand this very unusual and unique situation. And I, I think we have a better understanding of it now. You know, I have no idea how we're voting. I mean, I have my own sense for myself. And, and, and the real challenge for me is, is, you know, breaking that boundary where water is, is so scarce now. And, you know, for us to be able to meet the needs inside our existing boundary is gonna be a challenge over the next, you know, few decades, in my view. Tremendous amount of pressure for us to, I mean, we're, we're putting water back into Lake Mead now. And I'm not sure I, I can get there to.
Mr. Powell, I'm sorry, your mic is off.
Oh, it's on. Oh, sorry. I was pointing the wrong way. I'm not sure I can get there, but that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling with stereo. Anyways, I, you know, I mean, we're, we're gonna get to a vote here at some point. Sorry. But that's my struggle is, I, I really appreciate the project. I, I think I understand what you're doing there now. But, but do we break that boundary and, and essentially export water from our, outside our, our existing service area?
If I may, we're, we're, we're in no man's land, right? We're south of your boundary. We're north of IID and we're, we're stuck out there. So I, you know, I, you know, I pray you, you, you help us out at least on the, on the domestic side. I, I, you know, again, you, you, you mentioned a couple of decades. Again, what we're trying to do is get to that recycled water project. And, and in the end, we're only really asking for, for construction water until we get there. And even 50 gallons a day per employee would, would, would change our lives out there going forward beyond that, so.
So if we, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
If we, if this is approved, then this will come back to us with an agreement and?
Correct. We'll further the hydraulic model and look at the studies and then provide, come back with a, a special domestic water agreement, which will outline the required facilities to, that BRTech and the County of Imperial will be obligated to install at no cost to the district. The service plan included in your bid item, bore item, has the preliminary facilities to provide service to them. But there's, there's still more further analysis that needs to be done. We asked, that why we're bringing this item is, is we don't want to incur so many more engineering costs for BRTech if the board wasn't gonna accept them for annexation.
But of course, once, once they are anned, if they were to be annexed, then they would be eligible for service as long as they meet the conditions. It wouldn't be a matter of saying no to service at that point.
Yeah, for, for me, I, I think I, I feel like there's, at least for me, more, more conversation to have. You know, I'd like to hear from Imperial County what their thoughts are on this. And so I, I would prefer to table it. Otherwise, I don't think I'm there either to, at this point, support it. But, but I also don't wanna not talk about it anymore.
We're open to a continuance so that we can get you that information and, and arrive at a, a comfort point, one, one way or another.
How long is the?
John, Gage.
What got you? How, how long is the?
I'm sorry.
How long has the site been there for? How long have you been operating for?
Well, the site's been there since the 60s and.
So you've been taking trash from, from the?
No, no, so, I'm sorry. And we started our, our expansion of work after we won the contract. We signed it in December of 2008. And we started immediately going through the EIR and whatnot to do the expansion. So we started, again, in early 2009. I think we took over operations February 1st of 2009 and began the, the. and began the, the task of the environmental and design for the expansion. We got our CUP in, I think it was, it was dated two thousand and 10, but then there was some legal things with Riverside County that, that extended that for a year to, to two thousand and 12. So we built our first liner in, we started actually in the heat of the summer of two thousand and 14. And so when we realized that our well had developed some issues, that's when we came to CVWD and asked for construction water. So bless these, bless your staff for, for helping us out on that. We started, because we are outside of the, outside of the zone and, you know, there, there could have been some, some legal issues with that, I'm sure. I lost my train of thought on it, but, um.
It's okay, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm getting there, you know? I need some.
Thanks for the answer.
I, I had a final question. So I understand, and I, I'm okay with tailoring it all, I'd be prepared to move forward with this today, but I don't think we're there yet. But I understood there was a deadline of some sort that was discussed at the last meeting? And is there a deadline or is that?
Oh, my gosh, yeah, so, oh, go ahead, please.
So, yeah, the LAFCO, uh, this application has been through since 2020, was submitted in 2020. So the County of Imperial had approved the tax sharing agreement, as we talked about in June. And they were prepared to, wanted to continue this item. However, if, um, if we did not, at this point, submit that, they were most likely going to consider this project abandoned, is what they were telling us, telling staff. If we did not move forward.
Do we know someone over there?
Yeah.
We do, and he's the one taking that position.
No, I mean, on the LAFCO board.
Oh.
LAFCO was telling us that we're considering.
This is on the Imperial side, though.
Oh, this Imperial.
Oh, it's Imperial.
Director, no, no, it's Riverside, but Director.
It's Riverside.
Is it both or just one?
Riverside.
Just Riverside.
They, they, they are working with us again. They, they kind of took the deadline off. They were.
Oh, okay.
But I just want, this item was tabled in June, right? And we've brought it back. So I just, I just need really clear direction on what you want us to bring back again.
Yeah.
Because the, Director Estrada, the county has approved this agreement. So I don't know what more information you want us to talk to the county about.
Well, for, for me, what really, what really stood out was, uh, Director Nelson's comment on franchise. And it sounds to me like this is a pretty important project for the county. And so if it's dependent on our involvement, I'd like to figure out if there's something they can do. Maybe there's a better spot for us. Uh, otherwise, I mean, that, that, that was really my intent. Otherwise, I, I really don't see much of a benefit, John.
So the.
I don't see the county paying us anything for the service.
The county owns the property, and so it's not changing hands. And, and the county has an agreement with Burt Tech for Burt Tech to operate this landfill. This isn't any different than another landfill in our service area that comes to us and asks for service.
Then if you're telling me a staff that there's.
But that landfill's in our, in Riverside County.
It would, no, it was stated.
That's, that's asking us for service, that's what I'm trying.
Right, if it were, but, but, but what I'm saying is that we, we don't get tipping fees. We don't get franchise fees. We don't get that from anybody else. So why would this be any different?
So, so I, so thank you for that. If, if you're saying to staff that there's really nothing else that you can do, then, then I think we're ready to make that. Then I would, I would change my position.
Sure, I, um, if, if I may, Gary, John Gay, the Director of Public Works, was, was, had actually committed to, to writing a letter of support. We, we haven't gotten it yet, but, um, I, I believe it's on the wire or something. What's that?
I have not gotten it.
Yeah, I haven't gotten it yet. I mean, I, again, if, if we can continue, if, if that would make, if that would make the difference, I.
Well, from staff, from staff's perspective, we just need to know what the board wants in order to get to a position of making a decision. Whether it's yes or no, we can't continue it just to let people continue to think about why they're uncomfortable and making the vote.
So I have one more item. Is there some, for staff, is there some way we can put into the, a water service agreement that, that to the extent that recycled water is available, that they'll take that first? Can we put that, I know you said that's what you would do anyways, but can we put that into the agreement?
Yes, absolutely. We can put anything into the agreement, yeah.
Then let's put into the agreement, uh, those languages in that the, in that we work with the, with the County of Imperial to, uh, receive a portion of the, of, um, the, it doesn't even have to be the fees, but that we receive some compensation for this, for supplying water. Listen, we, it, when we take water that far, there's no way we're going to come out, we're going to come out on, financially, on serving water down there.
Just to clarify, you're asking us to set up a billing process with the County of Imperial?
Why not? I mean, if we can't make an agreement, apparently, then, uh, we need to be compensated for adequately getting water down to that area.
Well. But that compensation comes from Burt Tech?
Yeah.
Not from the county?
Burt Tech is the customer.
I know, but we're taking over the taxing authority for that area. Why, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't?
No, no, we're not. No, we're not taking over the tax. That's, that's the whole purpose of the tax exchange agreement, to say that there is no, there is no exchange of taxes because we're both public agencies. So we're just dealing with a private entity, Burt Tech, and they're just like any other developer. If they want water service from us and we can't, they don't have it adjacent to their property, they have to pay to extend it to their property.
They're not going to pay any, they're not going to pay the taxes?
No, because they don't own the property. County of Imperial owns the property.
So, yeah.
So there's taxes and then there's the other things that Director Nelson was talking about that come straight from the county. They have nothing to do with the tax base, right? That's what you're concerned about.
And, and my only point that I was trying to make, Harry, was that, you know, I was thinking about John's comments about, and then the, the figure that shows, we're not pumping any water from that Salt and Sea, uh, I don't know what, what, what word to use, but, but we're, we're basically exporting all the water from the Indiosa Basin. And so for me, that must have some sort of value, some very unique value.
But we do that for all of our Salt and Sea community, for all of our customers.
But they're already in our service area. That, you know, that, that's already in, this is it. And so for me to get in there, it's a pretty unique opportunity. And so either the county has, you know, puts value in that or they don't. And if they don't, then they don't.
And where, where would that leave us? I mean, what you're asking for us to do is to go negotiate with the County of Imperial in order to provide water service to Burt Tech. And the county doesn't provide that service now.
Yeah, to their property.
And, and quite honestly, the operation has existed without this water service.
Which is another point that I was trying to make.
So they're not going to go away, they're just going to be encumbered. But I don't, if I was at Imperial County, I wouldn't be paying you guys anything. Because it's, what do I gain? I don't gain anything.
You know, what I, what I think I'm hearing is, and I don't even know if this is legal, and I'm not asking for this, but, but I'm hearing is, is that we want some kind of a financial benefit to doing this, but that's not going to come, I mean, that would have to come from the customer. It wouldn't have, it wouldn't come from anybody else. And I don't, I, I'm assuming we're going to charge our normal rate for this water. The volumetric rate's going to be what it is, right?
Correct.
So you're going to pay the same as everybody else.
Yes.
And so that's the concern. I mean, we, we know this area is, is not, is, is financially not a.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Not a winner, right? Because it has very low numbers and high costs.
Right.
Already.
Right.
And so now we're going to add more to that and expand it. Yeah.
Well, the concern is that, that they're very limited on what they can receive on the construction water side because of the, the, the system is so fragile, right? It's so old and it, and so we are very cautious about how much water we can give them. So any new service, they are going to have to pay. Um, and they are not going to be able to benefit from the existing, the existing system without making improvements.
But for construction water, they could just drill their own well.
Yes.
There's plenty of water underneath the ground for construction. Right, I mean, they could just drill their own well and they've got plenty of water to, to use for construction.
So the, as I understand it, the request is really for domestic water for the employees.
Correct.
Once we make that connection, they can use it for whatever they want to use it for. I mean.
That's the problem. Unless it's size.
Okay, well, I mean, but if you don't want them to use it, then don't approve.
But it's not that much, it's not that much.
It, it's not that.
Water. I mean.
No.
Can't you just have a water truck come in every, and supply that water? I mean, you're talking about a couple thousand gallons a day at the most?
All right, well, these, this, this was our, this, this, this was our request. Is that we have this discussion and then we, we either.
Continue or.
Continue with the ta, um, the tax exchange agreement, which would then continue with the annexation process, or we, we discontinue the annexation. And at this time, we send a letter to LAFCO saying that we're proposing, or that we're asking for them to discontinue it. So.
Right, because once they become a customer within your jurisdiction, then they're, they have a right to say, well, we're only going to pay the cost of extending the system, not the other things you're talking about today. So it's not as if we could, could condition service on other compensation, uh, concerns. That's what, once you become a customer, your position is, what's the cost of getting service to me? If there's other compensation issues dealing with an exchange of property with, with the county, that's something that would have to be done outside of an agreement before you became a customer, if you became a customer.
Does that mean that, that, so that the counties exempt from like the state water project tax too?
Yes.
And I get John's point in some of these, the land value, I don't know, that it'd be significant.
Sure, one more voice, we've run on this for an hour.
Okay.
Well, it, it's directly to that point.
I'm a no.
Jeff, you may have to chime in on this, but if they paid the regular rate, they wouldn't be paying the full cost because all of our other customers pay the state water project tax, which pays for an imported water source, and our rack doesn't cover that because it's not brought in. So they would have to pay, if they're going to pay just a full cost of water, an alternative rate to be equivalent. And that, that would have to approximate.
And we don't have an alternative rate.
We, we, and this is the question, under that basis, I think you could condition a, a special rate for them because they're not like other cus.
For the cost of the service, but not for the other things that we've been talking about, yes.
Right, so it could be different.
Ready to vote.
It would be the cost of the service, though.
Right, yes.
Put a bullet in the head. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate the, the input.
Did we have someone from the county online now?
Mr. Powell, I did have a, a Mr. Gay, John Gay, on the, um, on pub, yes, he is the Public Works Director.
For which county?
Imperial County, who would like to speak.
Like to speak, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Gay, can you hear me? I know you were having some audio issues.
Hello, uh, this is John Gay with the County Public Works. I'm not sure if, uh, you can hear me or not.
We, we can hear you, you're very low, though. If you can get a little bit closer to your mic or your computer. Garrison, can you turn on the, turn up the volume, please? John, are you still there? I think you might have lost him.
We lost him.
Not sure if, uh.
There you go.
The audio's working, it seems as if, uh, you're coming in and out occasionally. But if you can hear me, maybe a thumbs up.
Yeah, go ahead, we can hear you.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate, uh, the consideration this morning. Just want to kind of let you know, um, where our County Board of Supervisors is at relative to this request. You may not know, or you may know, they've acted on this, um, and they have approved a tax sharing agreement between CVWD and our county. We have a long-term lease agreement with Burt Tech that allows for us to be able to utilize, uh, um, the site for their landfill operations. It's, I think it's a hundred-year lease, it's very long. Within the tax sharing agreement, I think if there's any concerns related to, uh, what the position of that landfill will be in the future, there is, uh, uh, accommodations made within the agreement that if it changes ownership, um, if it, you know, if it were to privatize outside of the county, or if it were to change, um, in some other form, uh, maybe it doesn't become a landfill site and then something else happens in the future, um, the tax sharing agreement would open up. So if there's any concerns related to the fact that right now it's, it's, uh, it's zero tax between the counties, there is an allowance for that to be reconsidered in the event landfill operations there change outside, under the county umbrella. Want to make sure that's clear. This'll help, this'll help the county with, with regards to 1383 and some of the, um, some of our, our landfill issues that we have to date. A stable source of water is extremely important, um, for, uh, the long-term viability. So if you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer. Not sure if I'm going to be able to hear, but you can type on chat and I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gage? All right, thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else?
None. Sorry, I'm checking still, and I don't see, no, nobody else with their, um, hands raised.
Yeah, so there've been a variety of issues brought up. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to discontinue the annexation process of this property.
I'll second that. Giving plenty of time, in case somebody has a substitute motion. Not hearing any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Yeah, that sounds like a 5-0, yeah. Appreciate your, your time, uh, Dan, Dave. Yeah, it just didn't make sense. Thank you. All right, let's see if we can get back on track here. This is the Unclaimed Moneys Finance, Rick, good morning.
Good morning. I'll be extremely brief on this item. It's a annual administrative item, and we're seeking permission to issue a required public notice that opens a 45-day period, essentially for anyone to claim unclaimed funds that we have on hand. Usually, these are checks that have never been cashed, and we can't find the right person to cash them. People have deceased, they don't have heirs, things like that. And so this is a, a government requirement to go through this process. At the end of the 45 days, if it's still unclaimed, then we essentially relinquish it back to the funds that it was paid out of. For a practical matter, if somebody actually came forward after this point and presented evidence, we'd probably certainly consider it and probably still issue payment. But it helps us with the accounting side to clear the books.
Okay.
I'd move approval of, uh, item C under point two.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed by me. I checked the list, I didn't see anyone I knew on there. Written communications, we had, uh, one listed, and it looks like it was resolved. I think maybe a misunderstanding there.
Yeah.
It's actually going to get a bigger budget. It sounds expensive, but it actually, it's the opposite. I was going to email that person when I saw that and just say, hey, shut your mouth, you're going to. Yeah, it's getting better, not worse. No, I know, that's funny. Stay out of it. No, well, the way the.
I had the same response.
I think that the way that it was written, people just have a basic distrust of government, a lot of people do. And, and they just assume if you're sending me a letter, you're going to take my money. And they didn't expect, the, the real reason for the letter was just to say, we made an adjustment, your budget's bigger and.
And you're taking pictures and.
Yeah, you're going to actually.
They're being spied on and.
Yeah.
I get it.
I don't blame, I don't blame the letter writer for that. All right, so, uh, on to the meetings. Director Nelson, I think you had the first.
Yeah, this was back in, uh, June, prior to the Colorado River Board. That was held in Burbank, there was a dinner the day before. Networking had, uh, some city council people from Burbank there, talking about Colorado River water, so. That was it.
Okay. Conference, did you?
Oh, uh, oh, and then on July 6th.
July 6th.
Oh, I meant on July 6th. I met with Perry Clausen, Executive Director of the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition, and there had been, so we had made a presentation to the board regarding the nitrogen use efficiency standards, and so we discussed those issues as well as statewide Irrigated Lands Coalition's dues. That particular board, that Irrigated Lands Coalition, had raised their fees to eight dollars per acre on, across the irrigated lands in the Coachella Valley, and so Perry and I were discussing around the state what some of the other numbers were, and, you know, some of the other numbers ranged from four dollars up to like ten dollars in there. And certainly, Coachella Valley's on the higher side of that because of a couple reasons, but probably the major reason is that there's not a lot of lands that are participating in it, and so it runs the cost up on a per acre basis.
All right, Salt and Sea Authority, Director Agar.
Yes, so attended the Salt and Sea Authority meeting by Zoom. There were the routine reports that were given, but there was a fairly significant amount of discussion around the Padilla bill. And I think there was, there were some conflicting opinions about whether or not they should change their position on the bill from oppose, unless amended to support, to be more consistent with some of the other agencies, including ours. But, and I actually spoke in favor of that approach, but ultimately, the board voted in favor of sustaining their current position and sending a message to the Senator's office that they wanted to keep a fire lit underneath to make more changes. So they were gonna submit a letter to that effect, and that was pretty much the most significant on that, on that agenda. And then on, should I just go ahead, John?
Yeah.
Then on the, on the 25th, I attended the Mission Creek Groundwater Replacement Facility opening, brought back some material which I shared with all the board members. It was a good opportunity to network with board members from DWA and from Mission Springs, so it was a good opportunity. We did a little buzz door of the area and took care of that. And then the, on the 27th, I attended the Coachella Valley, my first meeting of attending the Coachella Valley Energy and Sustainability Committee, which is pretty interesting. There was a presentation by Brian Montgomery on the joint powers agreement for the Indio, New Indio Authority. It was kind of interesting to hear what was going on. And then there was most discussion took place around the LAFCO study process, and there's a general feeling that the LAFCO study underperformed in their recommendations, and there is going to be further action by the governance committee to get them to provide more specific recommendations on the report. No.
This is just wrong?
Yes. That's it.
So the name of that, that was, the name of the committee is not right, right?
It's the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, not...
Oh, right, okay.
And sustainability.
I was reading the different mine, okay, my bad.
Yeah, no, no, not your bad, it just was printed wrong.
Yeah. It's not the Sebag one.
It's the commission, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The hand-me-down chairs.
So I was out of town a little bit. Are we officially on that?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yeah, okay.
We being Director Agar.
Director Agar.
Yes, on there.
And Rick is providing staff support.
Yeah, good, good, good. All right, so on to the, Director started a meeting with staff on Avenue 66.
Yeah, so I met with staff to just get a sense of where we're at with the project. I'd seen that we're getting ready out to go out to bid, and so with that in mind, I wanted to get a sense of the schedule for when we were projecting, bringing this to the board for approval and construction schedules, things like that. As you're aware, there's been a lot of folks that have been part of funding this project, this is a significant project. There's a lot of folks interested in being part of any type of celebratory event that we put together, which we wanna put one together, it's a significant improvement for the community out there. And so we're just planning on how to roll that out, who to invite, kinda taking a similar approach to what we did with the Bureau of Reclamation project. So staff is really doing a great job, gonna keep you checking on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Director Nelson with the...
So the last two, yeah, as I mentioned, I was out of the country, and so during that time, the Colorado River Board of California held a three-day retreat in, to discuss 2026 renegotiation guidelines and objectives. And so I think Robert was at that, and so I got, kinda got caught up with Executive Director Harris, Jessica Neworth, and they subsequently sent me a matrix of issues that I think Robert has at, if you're interested. So that was a good call. And then on the following day, I had some discussions with Robert regarding those issues as well as some state water project issues, including the DCP, not the drought contingency plan, but the Delta Conveyance Project, yeah.
Great.
That was it, thanks.
Yeah, so that's it for what's on the agenda. There were probably a couple of meetings that didn't get listed. One in particular, I'm aware of, is August 2nd, Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition met by Zoom or whatever the...
Oh, yeah.
...thing was, and went over a number of things. I mean, there, we're now at the point, I, you know, just as a member of that group, I don't think there's ever been anything I've put more money into that I've gotten less out of. You know, it's, it's, it's providing regulatory cover, but what we actually are doing is a lot of testing, you know, writing reports, more testing, now we're gonna be doing fish tissue analysis. For what benefit? I still don't really know. I don't know what's gonna change in anybody's practices as a result of this, or what sort of benefit might come of it. But anyways, we keep doing it because we're required to, and the requirements keep getting heavier and heavier and heavier, and the members are getting a little upset, and our acreage are shrinking.
And these are not requirements by CBWD?
No, 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 it's the state water board.
These are requirements by the State Water Quality Control Board.
Just thought I would clarify that it wasn't the water district.
No, it's not, it's not the water district. Water District's been providing some support, helpful support, but it's frustrating, really frustrating. Anyways, we met. Any other meetings? And Director Nelson was on that as well. Any other meetings that we need to report on?
Quite a lot.
Good. Is there a motion to approve PRADA for those meetings reported on?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed by a 5-0. Board member, why don't we start with Director Nelson?
No comments today.
Okay.
No comments.
I had some comments on the conservancy bill, but I think there might be a report, so I'll just save it for that. Jim, if there's a report, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'll have Victoria and I talk briefly. There's not a lot of substance, but she can come up and give you a quick update when we get to the parties.
Thank you.
All right. I don't particularly have any comments either, except just nice to see everyone. It's been a while. Let's keep moving on. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items? No, gender manager report.
Yes, sir, nothing this morning.
Council report.
I will pass as well.
Wow. Departmental reports, sounds like we have one.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I could provide a very brief update on where we stand with SB 583, the Salt and Sea Conservancy Bill by State Senator Padilla. As you know, the summer, the state legislature is still in summer recess, they'll come back next week, so this is their last week of recess. We have sent Dan Reeves, the Chief of Staff, an email last week, just wanting to touch base with him regarding if they had heard back from California Natural Resources Association on their take on the bill agency, excuse me, CNRA, I just didn't wanna throw an acronym out there. Additionally, we have also just wanted to get his feedback on IID's amendments and if there was any further amendments that we should anticipate before moving to a support. As you know, we are in a support if amended position. Unfortunately, we have not heard back yet, and he must probably be on vacation as well, so I didn't have too much of an update. We did speak with him a couple of weeks ago to where he anticipated that the bill in current print is most likely where it might stay, but of course, we wanted to reaffirm that. And so as soon as we know anything, I'll let Jim know and he'll communicate with the board, yeah.
Thank you, and that, yeah, that was what I was trying to get a sense of. I did have several conversations with his office over the last few days, also trying to get a sense if they plan to make any additional amendments, because I think I had heard that they were starting to ask for support letters. I think that's the reason why they went to the authority, and so, yeah, as soon as you hear back...
Absolutely, and we did mention, you know, from our conversation, that if they were starting to seek letters of support, how could we as CBWD be helpful in providing one? You know, if, I think we're fine currently where we're at. I know we're not seeking additional amendments, I mean, I leave that to the board's pleasure, but that's where we stand.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Victoria. Anything else? So at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the many items on that agenda, then we will, we will reconvene and report out after that. Regular meeting is hereby reconvened, and we did consider the items. We have some reportable actions, and Jeff will cover those right now.
Yes, Mr. President, on items N, O, P, and Q, on a motion by Director Nelson, second by President Powell, and a 5-0 vote, the board took action to return without action as partly untimely said claims and to otherwise reject said claims. On item 12S, on a motion by President Powell, second by Director Aguilar, and a vote of five to zero, the board took action to accept the application to file a late claim in order to continue with further investigation.
That was 4-1, right? That was the one that was...
That was the number that was not reportable.
Oh, that one.
That was the one that was not...
There was one before that, okay.
On item 12T, the board took action to reject an application for filing a late claim and to send the appropriate notice. That motion was by Director Nelson, second by President Powell, and a vote of five to zero. On item U, on a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Aguilar, and a five to zero vote, the board took action to reject an application to file a late claim. And on item V, the board took action by Director Nelson, second by President Powell, and a 5-0 vote to reject the application to file a late claim. There was no reportable action on the other items.
Thank you for that report, and with no further business, we're adjourned.